Hey, well, folks, it's five o'clock, very unusual time for us to be meeting, but nonetheless, it is a special meeting of the common council to discuss budget. So I called that to order. It's Tuesday, October 19th, and we're in the council chambers. We'll start with roll call. Ken Killian? Eileen Nichols? Kathy Kop?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Yeah.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
And that's the only thing on our agenda tonight is this work session on department operational budgets. And so we'll just turn this right over to Adam.
Sounds good. So yeah, obviously tonight is kind of the work session for the council to be able to ask any questions in regards to any of the departments that you're seeing and the proposals. So what I'd like to do kind of first is or kind of the game plan for tonight is I'm going to kind of summarize the information that I kind of gave at the last presentation of the council meeting to talk about where the budget kind of currently stands, what we're seeing in regards to increases, decreases. And then the game plan is I will pitch it back over to council president Dos, where then there will be an opportunity for each council member to ask if you have any specific questions about any departments. We're not going to go line by line. We'll kind of go if there's any specific things you want to talk about. But hopefully kind of the overview I give gives a kind of picture of what this budget is kind of seen and where we're at. So obviously what you have in front of you should look like this gigantic spreadsheet here that I tried to print off. What this spreadsheet is, or kind of the way I would phrase this, is this is essentially kind of the the ability for you as council members to be able to showcase to the public in a summary, what is going on with this budget? This is kind of a, you know, for lack of a better word, it's more of a justification or explanation summary in one page, your one page note that you can kind of look at when you're talking with residents. So obviously, as we talked about in this budget, you know, one of the struggles that we have been dealing with is obviously coming out of the pandemic. So we have seen the impacts and specifically as my role as the city manager is to kind of look five years out and kind of start thinking about the impacts that we're seeing. So what you're noticing in this budget is we are not proposing any real additions to staff. So there are no new positions being proposed. What this budget really is doing is kind of investing in the staff that we have. So looking specifically into, you know, potentially increases that need to be made in areas. One of the things obviously we have noticed, and I'm sure you have noticed in regards to just in general, our employers are raising their costs in order to attract employees. And that now is having a cyclical effect on us as municipalities and municipalities as a whole. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of our employees that we hire for seasonal positions and even for full-time positions, we're competing now against, you know, the McDonald's, you know, the Walmarts, the Targets who are paying anywhere between $15 and $20 an hour for starting. So kind of forecasting that and seeing that out, that's a concern. Obviously, I see that if we don't continue to be at least competitive in the wages that we're giving, it's going to create two things. Either one, we are going to struggle to retain and attract employees. But then also two, it's going to put us out of whack and cause us to have to continually either be recruiting for positions or we're going to be plucked by other places for those positions. So what this budget essentially looks at right off the bat, if you're looking at the operation expense increases on the spreadsheet that I gave you, there are two big kind of proposals. One is obviously the 1% wage increase. So every year we have a standardized kind of wage increase that we do that averages between 1 and 2%. So this year we're proposing 1%. One thing that we're looking at then is also with WPPA, so that is the Wisconsin Police Professionals Association. We are obviously in active negotiations every year with that organization in regards to potentially wages. So what we're looking at is potentially a 4% increase to again, try to stay competitive. What we have noticed in that area, and I would say since I've been here now for almost two years, is that we have actively been recruiting pretty consistently for police officer positions. And unfortunately, because again, some of the wage differentials we've seen with other municipalities, we have lost some pretty good candidates to other areas because they're paying more. So that is something that we have to take into consideration. So that's why we're proposing to kind of present that increase. So those two kind of line items essentially equate to $46,400. So if you remember in the last presentation that I gave, a 1% increase in the tax rate roughly equates to $47,000. So you can see just those two items alone essentially is a 1% increase in the overall operating expenses. So then if you look at the next two areas, our health insurance, we've been pretty fortunate over the last couple of years with our health insurance. We've actually, you know, last year, if you recall in the budget, there was a 0% increase that was done. The year previous to that, we actually saw a reduction in our health insurance. It's kind of now time to pay the piper is the best way to kind of put it. We are seeing that, you know, we do have a contract with our health insurance where they are only allowed to increase by a certain percentage. That's 8%. They're basically going to the max. And a lot of that has to do with coverage. The other issue is obviously we have more employees enrolling in the health insurance program. So we've had some, you know, new family members that have been created this year, have been born, which is exciting, obviously for our staff, but that obviously increases potential changes to health insurance. So what you're seeing there is that is a $76,000 increase potentially across the board to health insurance. The SALT contract, again, that directly relates to what we're seeing in markets where unfortunately, because of COVID and because of supply chains and demand, those costs are going up. So we are seeing that. So 50% of those total costs, when combined with our health insurance, comes to $93,500. That right there is almost a 2% increase just in those two items alone. So right now you're looking at those areas we looked at are about a 3% increase. Then if you look at the SALT contract or, you know, the remainder of the SALT contract, the increases we have to do for the gubernatorial election, again, that's something that happens every couple of years. So we have to plan for that. And then again, with our museum, some increases to the operation expenses, we weren't necessarily able to provide an increase into in regards to employees, even though that was definitely something that was talked about as we want to look into the future. But one of the areas, obviously with the museum and some of the amazing things that they're doing there, we wanted to increase some of the ability for them to, you know, operating expenses in regards to marketing, different things like that. So that's why you're seeing that increase. So right there, that's about 47,500, again, another percent. So right there, that puts you at about four. Then if you look at the step increases for eligible employees. So for some of you council members will remember this, for some of you that don't, in 2016, the city essentially went out and did a full-blown kind of compensation study. What that study essentially told us was kind of two things. One, we definitely need to increase our rates because we're not competitive with our peers. And two, we need to kind of have a plan in regards to what should the city systematically be doing kind of from step to step, year to year, in regards to advancing individuals throughout the, throughout our city. So typically what that study showed is about a 2% to 3% increases in between the steps. Unfortunately, due to kind of budget restraints and things that we have had to do, we have not really been able to follow that plan to the fullest. I think we've done it once since its inception. So again, and kind of looking at long-term planning, this is something that obviously is the city manager. I do feel we really need to do in order to continue to be operating at the level that we are and continuing to have the employees that we do. So that's why you're seeing this is in here for $32,000. We have some property and liability insurance changes, obviously with some of the new projects that we've had and taking on buildings, that increases our property insurance rates. So that was something we kind of expected and knew was going to happen. And then lastly, again, we have pool seasonal wages. This again is directly related to COVID. We have heard from those employees that unfortunately, you know, when we're trying to get seasonal employees, some are seasonal or part-time staff, it's hard to compete when other areas are paying, you know, $18, $16 an hour to be a part-time employee. So obviously as a municipality, we cannot hit that range. We can definitely certainly try to get there eventually. So this is a step in the right direction in trying to allow an increase to account for that. So you can see with all those, there's about 54,500 in potential expense increases. So what that shows is out of all of those areas, we're looking at about $241,900 in expense increases that accounted that are accounted for in this budget. So as staff, obviously, the next step we try to do then is look at areas we can reduce the budget. So there were two kind of key areas that we specifically found. One was the finance outlay. We're not anticipating doing any large-scale projects. We did some pretty significant increases this year in regards to our accounts payable programming and things like that. We're going to take a little bit of a hiatus on that again, to try to be able to combat some of these increases that we're seeing. And again, our street lighting with the change LED, we're seeing reductions there. So obviously that increased to that it was $28,000 that we were able to reduce in the budget. So as you can see, the estimated increases just in this kind of section were $213,900. So then what we did is started to look at the revenue side of things and kind of look at what are some of those areas that potentially we could increase. So one of the first areas we talked about was the township fire revenue. So in all of our agreements that we did, we made some slight tweaks into the budget. Where basically what we were doing for any time, we would partner with the township in regards to purchasing equipment. There was a formula that was created and that was then distributed out through everybody. We're basically looking to do that same thing in the budget. So that is something that we have now changed. So when the budget is adopted, essentially, we will bill out the proportion of those costs to those municipalities, which has increased $32,000 and obviously the favor of the city. There are some museum grants that obviously were additionally went after to help combat some of the operational expenses. You can see those are $17,000. And then with kind of the return of people going places and parking, and we are looking at increases, anticipated increases in our parking violations and our court penalties. The other thing that we looked at was our pool daily pass increase. So last night at the park recreation committee, there was a approval to essentially raise the rate from $3 to $4. So that's where you're seeing in here that estimates about a $5,000 increase that's anticipated that I put in here. So when you put all that together, that's about $77,000 of potential revenue increases. Unfortunately, then, when you look at the other side, we do have some decreases. The first one that you will see here is interest. This, I can say with 100% is directly related to COVID. So in 2019, for an example, the city actually took in about $129,000 in interest. So all of our savings accounts, CDs, you know, investments that we were doing, we were generating about $129,000 a year in interest that was helping our revenue line items. Well, obviously now with COVID, we continue to see very low interest rates, which is great for borrowing, not so great for when you're putting something in the bank or in a CD. So what we're anticipating there is we're seeing about a $55,000 drop in interest. Now, again, if you consider $47,000 is a 1% increase or decrease in the tax rate. So right there, you're seeing an issue that really is out of our control. There's not much we can do with that. And now we have to kind of combat that by looking at ways we can try to do additional revenue. So unfortunately, our revenue increases are, we definitely had some, but they're being combated by some of the decreases that we're seeing. So what you can see is the total estimated increase of just kind of these areas, which we have continued to talk about in the budget, are about $26,400 or essentially would accrete to an estimated tax increase of 4%. What staff did is we went back and kind of retooled and looked at areas where potentially we could reduce. So whether that was through operational, you know, cuts, through travel expense decreases, outlay decreases, and we've been able to get that down right now to about $145,721 is what is the anticipated increases. So what that equates to is essentially a 3.4% proposed increase in the tax rate. So now if you go over to the next area of this chart, you'll see kind of a breakdown here of how this impacts a taxpayer. So over the last five years, our tax rate has kind of ebbed and flowed. So it has gone in a little bit. So in 2018, it was about $8.13. In 2019, we actually dropped down to $7.73. Then in 2020, we started going up a little bit, $7.88. Again, in 2021, we went up to $8.02. And the proposed 2022 tax rate would be $8.29. So what this kind of chart shows you is if you get questioned by the community in regards to, well, how is this going to impact my home if it was assessed? There's kind of four different assessed values. There's $150,000 and it goes all the way to a home that's valued at $350,000. So what you can see here is, yes, there definitely is a proposal here for a tax increase. So if you owned a $150,000 home, you essentially would be looking to be requested to pay $41 more in your property taxes than you did in the previous year. But I want to preface that if you look back five years of total taxes that that property has paid, it actually, there is a big decrease that occurred in 2018. So realistically, over the course of five years, including the proposed increase, a $150,000 home in five years has seen an increase of $23.70. So that again is, you know, nobody likes a tax increase. I'm a property owner. I don't like tax increases either. But this is obviously something that we need to do in order to continue to run the day-to-day operations of the city and continue to be progressive in looking at, you know, following our strategic planning, looking at continuing to have quality staff, not having to worry about a constant revolving door of recruitment and ensuring that we're providing, you know, the services that everybody has expected, from police to garbage to EMS, to fire, to park and rec, to our senior center, library, the list goes on and on. So this just kind of provides you with a breakdown, obviously, of the rest of the homes and kind of how they assess out. So again, over the course of five years, including this proposed, you know, tax rate, we're looking at $150,000 home over five years, we'd be looking to need to be requesting to pay about $23.70. A home that would be valued at $300,000 is looking at about $47. And so there's increases in there. Obviously, with the overall tax rate, you have to remember that is just the city portion of the tax rate. The overall tax rate includes the school district, the state, the technical college, and the county. So what I have provided in for you here is an example between 2020 and 2021. So for any resident of the city of Platteville, you know, we have learned that potentially there could be reductions or either flatlining in some of those other areas. So as we move forward and as we get closer to kind of the public hearing in regards to what the actual budget is, I will update these numbers and make sure that you guys have those so you can see that. But what's in here is kind of our proposed rate. What we've learned from the school district was they are anticipating a reduction, which again, a lot of their reduction, if you read in kind of the paper in their presentation, is they are getting a lot of funding from federal sources. The difference between us and the school district is the school district has the ability to use some of that towards operation costs. We do not. So that's some of the caveat that we have as a municipality is we can't use that for staffing. We can use it for long and limited-term employees, but there are some differences between that. So obviously, we have gotten some grant funding, which is being applied through this through ARPA. You know about that being primarily used in the capital improvement plan. So again, this kind of gives you hopefully a kind of one-page kind of tax sheet that you can use to kind of explain if you get questioned by your constituents in regards to, you know, some of the proposals. There are some things that still could change or impact this tax rate that we want to remember. We're still waiting on the statement of assessment. So if the assessment comes in better than we anticipate, that potentially will reduce the tax rate down. We also are waiting on municipal aid coming from the state. If that increases, again, that will reduce the overall tax burden that we're anticipating as well as, you know, there are some other things that we continue to kind of refine and look at as we go through that we'll continue to do. But essentially, this is kind of the summary of the proposals that you have in here. As you remember, there were also a lot of other proposals that were mentioned that are not in here. So when I met with staff, there was definitely, you know, requests for additional positions, for additional programming, for additional options. Unfortunately, with budgets and having to make tough decisions, those did not make it in here. What we really tried to focus on was obviously the staff. So one of the questions obviously that you as council members will have to decide is the staff increases are in there. The one position that is not is mine. I can't set my own rate. So that has to be done by you guys as council members. So what is in this budget right now for me, obviously, is a 0% increase. That's a conversation you guys will have to have and figure out what you want to do with that. Yes, sir?
I have a question on this table.
Yes.
There's 2021 tax rate. So city tax rate, 8.29. So shouldn't that heading be 2022?
Payable in 2022. So technically, it's the tax that's when you adopt the budget in 2021 for the 2022 budget year. So that's why it's labeled 2021.
I think it should actually say 2022.
I will make that change for you. That's fine. Certainly.
Is that correct?
That is, what she's saying is correct. Yes. What Director Mauer is saying is technically taxes, when the tax rate is always a year behind. So it's the year you establish it in, and then it's paid the following year. So there always is a one-year delay. So technically, the 2022 tax rate is your 2021 payable. So it's set in 2022. We paid that amount in 2021. So this would be the same thing. If you adopt the 2021 tax rate that is proposed, that is what is paid in 2022 taxes.
I agree with Ken. I would either think that that slot should be changed or the ones above it should be changed because you've got two different numbers. If you're looking at 2022, you're looking at 8.29, and down here, you're meeting at the 2021. So one of these two tables should be changed.
Sure. And I can do that. That's easy enough.
Another thing I think is helpful is to say that of all the money that you give in taxes, the city pays what percent of the total amount that you're paying? Like I say, out of $1,000, how much of that are you paying to the city itself?
Yes. So that is something when, when I do, when we do the final presentation that comes up here in November, we do, we will showcase that. Because then we'll have some more finalized numbers typically by then for the county, for the school district, for the state, and obviously the technical colleges. So we intend to showcase that. We have a graph that typically shows you kind of per dollar what the percentage is. We will definitely be showcasing you that when we get to that portion of the budget.
We, we, the city only makes up a relatively small part of it. When I say small, what is the percentage?
35% was what it was last year.
How much?
35% is what it was last year of the dollar.
Part of, it should be noted that part of that changed when the vocational tax rate changed. It used to, used to be more disparate, but when the vocational schools or the technical colleges got an influx of cash from the state separate from taxes, then the distribution of how much, or the percentage, I guess, of how much went to each taxing unit changed. And now the state doesn't actually.
State is not for the last couple of years.
And the state had been too. So the percentage went up just by virtue of those two actions.
Maybe I missed it, sitting here with all these words flowing. State tax rate, how much will that be?
So that has been zero since I believe about 2016, 2017. Don't quote me on that. But that's what my brain is telling me. They have dropped that. They have not had a tax. The state has not levied any tax since about 2016, 2017, and that has been consistently zero.
Am I paying state taxes?
You're not paying state, this is on your property.
On your property. Right.
Paying state income tax and state sales tax and probably all kinds of other state taxes. But you're not paying state property tax.
I have a question about the operating revenue increase, the township fire revenue. Are the townships aware that this may be coming? So it's not like shock for, okay, all right.
I think Adam and Ryan just finished their round of meetings with the townships and have signed agreements, I think, with all of the townships now. So.
We did, yeah. The conversation, what changed in there was specifically there was verbiage about the budget and how it was a bit confusing and convoluted. We're talked about a budget deficit. While essentially every year, there's a budget deficit if you don't apply taxes to it or any type of revenue source. So what we tried to rework with them and everybody kind of agreed and signed was that essentially when the budget is adopted, whatever the expenditure line item is for the fire department, that then is, is kind of considered very similar to how we purchase a vehicle together. So all of us have a population estimate that's done through the Department of Administration, and that kind of equates to a percentage. And then we all pay proportion to that percentage. So we will be charging all of the townships, that same kind of system is essentially we take the number, we put it into the formula, it spits out in a number, and we use an example in the sheet so they could kind of see what that potentially could be.
Okay. And then in that same area, the parking violations and the court penalties, why, why would that be increased so much? I mean, is it a result of COVID last year?
Yes. So Adam, if you don't mind responding. So in actual fact, when, when the pandemic hit, we substantially decreased those line items in the 2021 budget because essentially in 2020, we, we want, we want ticketing. I'm sure Doug can speak to this better than I can, but we, for a while there, we suspended some of those things. And then with the student body being gone, there was a, even when we resumed, there was a much decreased activity. What we're doing in the 2022 budget is bringing those back some. Not all the way back to the levels that they were in 2019, but we are, we are anticipating that that activity will increase again as a revenue source for the city. But, but we're also somewhat conservative in how we're budgeting those line items until things kind of get back on an even keel.
Makes sense. Hey, Isaac, do you have questions?
Yep, just a couple here. So the pool seasonal wage increase, now was that going to go to the $11 projector that you were looking at?
No. So they, so at the park recreation committee last night, they approved going from $3 to $4 for the single day rate.
We're in a different area.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seasonal wages.
Oh, seasonal wages. Yes, correct. So that would be increasing, correct.
That would be to the $11 that they were looking at?
Yes.
And then you brought up the other part. So instead of going to the $6, you said they went to the.
They proposed a $4, going from $3 to $4. And then they also proposed a change to the, so when you buy a season pass, it is a, you pay as an individual. So like for me, for my family, myself, my wife and my three kids, I pay $50 for me. And then it is 20, there's a fee then that's tacked on. They acted going to $25 as the increase. I believe it's originally from 20. So that's the proposal that was made there. So that was not included in this. Again, as we kind of get further into the finals, we'll see if that truly has an impact. But what's always a little tough there is you never know, if you base it off of a number, you never know if that's going to decrease or if that's going to increase. Or so we always try to go with a cautionary number.
Going on, Kathy is talking with the parking and the court violations there. I think to me, that would be kind of a higher number yet. Again, we're going through another year of decreased population at the university. Next year, they're projected another one. So even if we do increase, you know, some activity in town here, I don't know what percentage of the violations in the past were from, you know, the students or people coming in. But we're looking at another year and a half of decreased, you know, I hate to project a higher. I'd rather see it flat until we actually do see an increase in people coming to university and into town. So. This one's probably for you on the finance administration. So this year, I'm sorry, page number eight.
Hey.
Yep. What I did when I went through this, I just, I went to where I saw like percent, a large percentage increase over the previous year. So this would be down in the travel and conference. So this year projected 9,500, and the next year, you've went up to 16,000. And I'm assuming, which a lot of other businesses are, a lot of stuff is still going to be Zoom meetings online. Are you anticipating yourself going back to a lot of in-person meetings or?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you give me the page number?
Be number eight. I mean, about halfway down the page, it'd be the.
Travel and conference.
Travel and conference for finance.
Yep.
And actually, the 16,000 is support user fees. It's 3,000 for the travel and conferences.
I'm sorry, there's one line down.
Yeah. Are we? Okay, the support user fees is for the software that we use in, in finance. And we did add a couple of, we did add the accounts payable module and the purchase order module. So that's why there's an increase in those user fees.
Well, I have a question. Mine reads support user fees. They go up to 16,000. Is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so that's for the, the financial software that the city uses. And we added two new modules in 2021, the accounts payable module and the purchase order module. Those are new workflows that enable us to access the, all of the invoices that we pay on screen so that, and the approval process is also now paperless, which is more efficient both here, but it's also helpful if somebody has to be at home, they can actually approve invoices and process invoices while working from home.
All right. And the next one would be on page 29. This would be the public works and cemeteries. And the revenues. Curious as why such a dramatic drop from Greenwood Cemetery, interest down from 5,000 down to $200. And 75, I know interest rates are lower, but that's quite the drop.
So interest rates are actually essentially zero now. So interest rates are actually essentially zero now. And we were, you know, that that has been a tremendous some impact on the city and all municipalities, obviously, to 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 lose those revenues and interest. But that is reflective of um, you know, if you see our activity for interest um as of June thirtieth was a hundred and twenty-nine dollars uh for Greenwood and forty-four dollars for Hillside. So so that reflects um the uh, you know, the actual interest earnings in twenty twenty-one mid-year. And um you know, as we consulted with our municipal advisors, they were uh they 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 told us in in financial plans that they are doing for municipalities across the state that they are anticipating that same level of interest earning or um not interest earning for next year.
The next one would be on page thirty-seven. This would be the park and recreations programs. And this is actually line item number one. Um those are expenses we had talked about. Those movies we can break this down. We went from twelve-five down to seventy-five hundred.
Um, yeah, Luke's not here, is he?
He's not.
Okay, I can I can handle that. So if you look at the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty actuals for that line item, you can see that seasonal um expenditures in rec programming were actually five thousand five hundred and eleven and one thousand three hundred and fifty. And obviously, the twenty twenty reflects pandemic impact. Uh but as we were looking at seasonal wages, uh we 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 took a deep dive into those numbers and we also looked at what was needed for the aquatic center. And so we um we felt that it made sense to reduce the actual budget for this line item even while increasing some of the wages for the staff in this line item. Uh because somehow the historically what had been budgeted here was not reflective of what was actually being spent. Um but then we did, as you've probably seen in the aquatic center budget, that we did increase that line item to reflect both um actuals and also to reflect the proposed wage increases.
All right, page forty-one, Dubrovsky Center. So you know, the begin the two to from from, excuse me, from the funded balance. It's projected to be quite a bit lower than what the two thousand twenty-one actual was. And I've stated this ever since this building's been built. Um it's it's great that the the rent cost is low on the building. We actually took advantage of this. She read our youngest daughter's graduation there. But on another thing, you know, there's going to be start being some expenses and yet again, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars wouldn't even cover a furnace for that building. Um you've got air conditioning, you've got plumbing. Um you know, the deposit is really low. You get a bad case of somebody running out, which hopefully never happens that does some damage. Um you know, I could exceed that there. So again, I I like the fact that the wages are set, which the rent is down, but I do think it needs to be increased a little bit. Because again, there are eventually going to have to be some expenses that um and I've seen there be a a budget or a reserve for that instead of also next year, oh, now we need to borrow to get that or we're going to get that. So I think the the entire Brasi Center numbers need to be looked at for the rental, the deposits and with the, I'd like to see a little more breakdown onto what the expenses actually are, the lighting, the water sewer. Uh I know where the refugees there, what the maintenance is per time it's done, just to see some more clear numbers on that building. So.
So it's almost as if you were a fly on the wall last night at the Park Recreation Forum. That conversation definitely Jason was there as well. That that same conversation came up. So at the next Park and Recreation Committee meeting, they're actually looking at um additional potential ways of how to generate revenue or what are the discussions? Because the the synopsis of the discussion last night was basically it's we're trying to find out, are we leaning more towards this being a true event center? And we want to start charging as an event center or just like you said, do we still want to kind of have that sweet spot? Where if somebody in the community wants to rent it for a birthday party, whatever, we're not out pricing them. So some of the things they talked about that's going to be coming up at the next Park and Rec Committee meeting is, you know, do we allow a certain amount of, okay, if you rent the space, you get X amount of tables and X amount of chairs. But then if you need more than that, it's kind of how do we start building some of those typical revenue generators that you see in facilities? Where it's, you know, you're allowed X amount of tables, but if you want more than that, it's this amount of additional costs. Um so those are all things that they kind of talked about because it is legitimate concern is, you know, eventually you're right. There are going to be things that are starting to break on this building. And if all we're generating is about three thousand dollars a year, that's not going to cut it, you know, then it's going to be a problem. So I agree with you one hundred percent.
That was the last one I had.
I'd just like to follow up with that also. And and just, I think it's a good opportunity to point out that the the Brasky Center is what we call a special revenue fund. It's not in the general fund. It's a separate fund. And what that means is um it will accrue a fund balance, uh which presuming that we have more revenues and expenses and that over time, those funds, if there is a essentially a net profit each year, will stay in that fund and will create a reserve. Um and and that would be something that could be drawn on perhaps through an outlay expense item that would actually. So then you would actually have a budget where you might have more expenses than revenues in particular year. And you'd be drawing on that savings or that fund balance to to cover, just like you're saying, some larger expenses that were anticipated.
Hey, Lynn, do you have questions?
Uh they have really been answered. I was concerned because I did see the discrepancy in the tax rate. And then I was wondering about the if the pool tax increase would be sufficient enough to help generate um the seasonal wages, but um I feel like I either heard it or I saw what answered my question. So I'm good, no.
Okay, Ken?
Well, I have a few. Um some are historical. Uh page seven, the assessor professional services. Uh that's acquan appraisal.
That's correct, yeah.
So we went to a situation where they would not be here at the city, but they would be available to us by calling them. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so we, this all twenty nineteen, was that it? That was a special year to do did appraisal?
So actually.
That was forty-four thousand. Then we went to twenty-two thousand eight hundred for all the years after that. Am I correct in remembering that?
Uh yes, so we had a three-year contract that spanned, I think it was seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And that three-year contract included a full revaluation in twenty eighteen that involved uh visiting every property in the city physically. And the way that they priced that contract was at a higher amount for all three years. So I believe it was forty-four thousand for seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And then the next three-year contract did not include a full um revaluation, but it does include a market uh revaluation, which is coming up next year. But that will not involve the full physical inspection of each property, but it does allow them to incorporate more uh data in their assessing. Uh but that's the, that's why those two amounts are different.
Okay, uh next one is page eight. Uh Isaac may have covered. I know you covered some of this. The finance, the third line down, finance overtime. By the way, uh each of these items has a number attached to it in the budget. Is that correct?
Account number, yes.
As in previous years, so uh some of these things are a little hard to say as to where they are. Uh financed overtime reduced due to what says twenty twenty was one thousand nine ninety. Now it's reduced down to two hundred dollars.
So um typically, we don't see overtime being paid in the finance department. Uh we had some unusual activity in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Uh we had uh some retirements in the finance department and um and then we had some uh unusual activity particularly, well, I guess it wouldn't be reflected here so much in the utility in terms of um the resumption of disconnects, which was a very uh work-intensive process. But uh so what you're seeing in the overtime is reflective of um ne- needing staff to put in some extra hours to be able to transition to a a new person in payroll um and a new controller, um which requires some support from staff and and that kind of thing. Uh so that's why um what that's why those overtime numbers are high. Um however, we're not anticipating that in twenty twenty-two because staff is going to be fully trained and uncomfortable in their positions. And um we're not anticipating them having to work much in the way of overtime.
Okay, my next one is on page nine. I'm asking a question about the meaning. Property search charge and it's five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two from the apartment and the city manager. So uh what does that involve? What am I missing?
Sure.
That's the chief of police, I suppose.
Uh, no, actually, not that kind of property search. Um what this is, is uh when a title company is handling a closing of a property, uh they will ask the city to perform a search to uh to discover if there are any outstanding charges on that property. So that might be an unpaid utility bill or it might be uh unpaid fines related to snow removal or something like that. Um and the title company wants to include uh payment of those in the closing so they don't go on the property taxes at the end of the year. So uh so the city does charge a fee for that. And you can see that in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um the the revenue from those fees was uh just under five thousand dollars. And so we felt it was um, it was a reasonable amount to bring that from thirty-five hundred up to five thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-two budget.
And did we cover page ten? Did you have a question, Ken, Isaac?
No, he did not.
Okay, uh information technology, second item, repair and maintenance. Uh in current year, five thousand dollars and then you're you're eventually increasing it to two thousand a year. So this year is um basically what? What was the repair this year was five thousand dollars and then we're now down to an estimated two thousand.
Yes, so um let me just go back here. So you can see that um so that line item, you know, has fluctuated a little bit. Um we had almost none in twenty twenty, uh twelve hundred and twenty nineteen. And and this year, it's been higher. Uh so the two thousand dollars was uh what we were anticipating um as kind of a midpoint there between those two levels. Um and uh we are under a new contract, as you know, with the university. Um so we're not really sure the that that particular line item is, you know, for things like um it's not for replacing desktops, that's under the uh um the outlay line item. Um and it's not for licenses, that's under a different line item. It's for that sort of miscellaneous stuff, like uh you know, somebody needs a new cable or we need, you know, those those kinds of expenses. A little bit hard to predict, so that's why we went with the two thousand as kind of a placeholder. And then maybe we'll see how things go throughout the rest of this this year um and next year to determine, you know, what maybe a more accurate number would be for the twenty twenty-three budget.
Uh page eleven, third item, professional services. I see uh three thousand eight hundred to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And it says there's nothing adopted in the budget for twenty twenty-one and it's back in the budget. It says estimated for twenty twenty-one, the same number, so. What the what the two spaces, if the space year-to-date actual is nothing and current year estimate is three thousand eight hundred. So what is that? Is that a payment for a ci- a city attorney?
Uh no, so this is our debt service budget um related to our bond issues. And uh there is a requirement, it's a a pretty uh heavy requirement by uh the SEC that bond issuers disclose certain things um on a centralized database for bond buyers and bond um analysts. Uh it's called Emma and I can't tell you what that stands for, sorry. But anyway, um and we pay Ella's uh a different Department of Ella's to handle that for us to make sure that we always remain compliant with disclosing everything that we need to disclose. Um the penalties or the repercussions for missing something um can be quite severe and it can definitely impact your bond rating. So we we do um pay that thirty-eight hundred dollars. Um as to why it wasn't budgeted in twenty twenty-one, I'll just say that, you know, when you get a new administration director, sometimes she's a little concerned as to why was this never budgeted before? Maybe there's some reason that she didn't understand. But after a few years, she thinks, you know, we really should be budgeting this line item and I don't really know why we didn't before. So that's why I've started budgeting it this year. Uh I can't explain why it wasn't budgeted before.
I'm just curious as to why it was out. Okay.
Sure.
Did I miss? How is um Ella's involved with this, if at all?
Sure. So they have a department that they that uh monitors um for disclosure with their clients, making sure that, for example, leases can be an item that have to be disclosed um under Emma uh for bond buyers and users. Um and that would be an example of the kind of thing that they they send out reminders to us to think about things. When the SEC changes the rules, they'll they'll tell us, um you know, do you have anything that falls under this new rule that you need to disclose? Uh so it says it's not their municipal advisors, which is a separate division, but it is their um disclosure department that does this.
Hey Ken, I'm going to hold you for a minute because Jason is leaving at six o'clock because he has a commitment. So we're going to hold your questions. And Jason, I'm going to give you the opportunity to ask any questions you might have. I think that's only fair in that there's only ten minutes remaining and you said you had to leave at six.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Um and to be honest with you, a lot of the questions and and areas that that have already been covered um have kind of been what I've had questions about. And then, of course, um being on the Parks and Rec, we're going to be doing a lot more discussion in terms of some of those items as well, so.
Uh Jason, I do have a, you know, I and I do not, I mean, I I want people to know that I support the wage increase for lifeguards.
For sure.
But I also want people to understand that we have a swimming pool and it costs us money. In fact, it appears that our swimming pool generates about half the money that we spend in it. And I I I mean, I enjoyed it this summer. I know people enjoy it, but it's really easy for people to say we should, we should, we should, we should, when uh you know, it's really not a revenue. And I don't know that anybody's swimming pool.
They never are.
Is a revenue generator.
Yeah, if you can find one, you better find out what they're doing.
So on page, you know, on page thirty-eight, it very clearly shows that our estimated budget is a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of an expense and our revenues are estimated at seventy-six thousand. So we're supporting this particular effort at the tune of eighty-six or eighty-six thousand in tax support. And I I want people to understand that. And I know that you all got emails too. And it's fine to get emails and support. Uh sometimes I would like the folks who are offering those letters to offer additional support since they really don't live in our, they they live beyond the limits of our city. Any other question?
No, no.
All right, so you're good?
Yes, thank you.
And we're going back to you.
Okay, um page twelve. Yeah, I I just wondered about this. This is ambulance payment to Southwest Health. Hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Does that include the payment uh on part of the city and also some of the town? on part of the city and also some of the townships, certain townships? $118,000. So that's the expense. Well, then I go down to revenues, it says the revenue is $118,000. Well, we didn't. We're paying out $118,000 plus the township that they're in there too. So why do you call this revenue? Because I don't see it as revenue.
So this is the special charge that is assessed on the utility bill. This does not include anything paid by the townships. This is just the bill that the city receives from Southwest Health for ambulance service. And we, we assessed the special charge to cover the cost of, of the service billed by Southwest Health for the city.
So the bill is, is that 1172?
So the, the bill in 2020 was 116,674.
Say per, per property is?
Oh, the special charge.
72.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forget exactly what the special charge is, if anybody else remembers.
I just wondered. Okay. But there's another bill on water and sewer that's for $60 that was added on a few years ago too. That's.
That's the, yeah, and maybe I, I have got confused the, the, that's the refuse $60 that's on the, that's on the property tax bill.
Yes.
And then those ambulance charges on the utility bill, I think.
Yes.
I think.
Yes. And the ambulance charge. What I see on a, on a two, on a two, let's see, two family is, my memory is 1172. I just wonder if that's correct. I don't know what the number is for a single family. Is that the same? Well.
We'll pull it and we'll let you know.
Well, yeah.
We'll move on. Okay. But I had a question about Friday and right. Does Friday and right get money every year from the Friday and right Southwest Wisconsin, whatever you call it, fund? It's roughly $3,500 per year, roughly?
Uh, it does get money from the community, from the fund. I can't.
Southwest Community.
Um, it's an endowment with the community foundation.
It's an endowment.
With a foundation. That was the word I was looking for. Thank you. Yes. And.
Okay.
And you can see that in 2020, that amount was $2,745. That represents, I believe, 50% of the interest earned on the endowment.
I asked the question previously in a previous year. Is the money in the Friday and right fund, is that only going to the Friday and right committee?
Yes.
Okay. Police Department. My first question is one, two, three, four, five lines down. Dispatchers, police dispatcher wages, 2019, $240,000, 240,419. And then I look at in Department 2022 and the city manager. The amounts are 212,987 for the department and 216,229. My question first is, is the number of dispatchers decreased? Or is the number of dispatchers being decreased? Now, I'm going to ask the same question as far as police department. We used to have the number of 21 officers in place. What's, I'll ask that question too. What's the number now?
Right now, the, we have.
What's the, what's the, what do you want to call it? Allocated number?
Authorized for, and I'm talking officers, 21 sworn.
21. Okay. So now my question is, what is the authorized number for dispatchers? Has that changed since 2019, since the amount of money paid to them has gone down?
It changed in that we went from four full-time and two part-time to three time and three part-time.
And a, and a part-time dispatcher is, is that, is that dispatcher being paid benefits?
They are.
Is a dispatcher part-time 50%?
No.
So they're less than 50%?
No, they're more than 50.
They're more than 50. So.
They average approximately 30 hours per week.
Pretty hours per week, so about 75%. Okay, so they're, they're getting, they're getting benefits?
At about a 75% three-quarter.
Okay. So the number of dispatchers has gone down.
Again, it's changed the same total number of people, but it's three full-time and three part-time as opposed to four and two.
Okay, next question is school patrol wages. Does that pertain to?
Crossing guards.
To police as part of the patrol? Are we talking about citizens, volunteers, whatever you want to call them, beyond patrol? Is that the?
The crossing, a crossing guard. And we have a sharing agreement with the school district on the single crossing guard.
Okay. The next question, it says here, police overtime. And overtime in the budget 2021 was $500. And then there's nothing yet for the current year. And then in the past years, we only had $3 and $9. So why are you putting in $500 a year overtime?
That is a little bit different account than the typical police overtime wages.
Up here on number four. The fourth line down is police overtime.
That's, that's not pertaining to the officers on the street.
Okay, but then there's another police overtime. That's the one I'm asking about. The $500. Is it, what is it?
I think that's for non-sworn overtime for other staff that may have to work overtime in the police department. And the 500 is a placeholder so that there's something in the budget in case there was a need for that kind of overtime.
And I think that it was specifically that area, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but we are anticipating a potential retirement, I think, in some of our administrative staff of the police department. So we do anticipate that potentially with a new employee, there may be some additional overtime or need for coverage that historically has not been there in years past.
And then I have a question about police and fire commission. $6,000. Is that, is that for, I read the minutes, is that for interviewing applicants, screening applicants, the $6,000?
Correct. And then the psychological evaluations, drug testing.
Okay, the next question is down on police towing. Okay, it says the budget this year was 3,000. When I looked at the revenue on the next page, 15, and it says towing $3,000. Somewhere. I got the idea that, oh, here it is, 2021, on the first page. It says the amount of towing is 5,000. So how are you getting more towing, 5,000 estimated for 2021? And then going to the next page. The revenue is set to be only for 2021, 3,000.
That ends up being largely a placeholder because in theory, towing should be an in-and-out account.
Right.
In that we try and recoup that is what you hope for. You don't always recoup all of it because some people may abandon their vehicles and not pay the tickets that. And.
So you listed as expense here, 2,000 extra expense.
Virtually a placeholder.
Okay, got it. Okay. I don't have much about animal control. There's still, you're back at $2,000. And if you have too many animals, I think our last, I asked last year, what do you do with the extra animals? So I guess we'll move on. The next page, 15. Maybe Isaac asked this one already. Parking violations in 2019. Revenue was 63,729. And then I go over here for estimated 2022. You're only estimating 37,000 on the part of department. And the city manager says 50,500. So what's going to happen now in this budget deliberation? Which number is going to be used? Do we have to decide?
Are you, I'm sorry, just to make sure I'm on the same page. You're on page 15 and the police department revenue?
I'm on 15.
Yeah.
I tried the wrong number.
And the question is between the department budget and the city manager budget?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is the city manager's budget.
We've been looking at the, at the 50,000.
50, 50,000.
Correct.
But what we've seen through the years, 2020, the actual was 39,000. 2021 was adopted with 37,000. So we're upping the parking violations as far as.
Yes. So you can see in, in 2019.
Okay.
Parking violations were 63,729 dollars collected. Clearly, as we talked about in 2020 with the pandemic, there were not as many parking violations assessed and there were less students, so that revenue figure dropped. As we approached the 2021 budget during the fall of 2020, we considered the impact of the pandemic. And so we conservatively budgeted for 37,200 for parking violations. If you look at where we were at at the end of June, we had already collected 31,685 dollars in parking violation revenue in 2021. And that was when we were still pretty heavily in the pandemic in the early part of this year. So we were, when we started the budget, the budget typically is, begins kind of where we were last year. But then when we, we reviewed each line item in detail, we felt that it was reasonable to bring those revenues up on both of those line items, including the parking violations, but not all the way up to where they were in 2019. But, but certainly more than we had in 2021's budget.
Yeah. So I run a financial analysis every month based on kind of looking at the information that finance gives me. And that's a little bit of my finance background. And so right now, just kind of as Nicholas said, looking at the averages, we're, I feel comfortable that we can increase to that number. Again, it's not typically where we were in 2019, but looking at where potentially we could end year-to-date. I think we'll be very well able to handle those, those numbers.
Okay, my next question is about the fourth item down this long list, police training reimbursement. And in 2020, it says 10,366. So why is it the only entry for all the years? Is this special training? Is training handled some other entry that I don't see?
In 2020, quite a bit of it was remote learning.
Says?
What in 2020, quite a bit of the training that was done was remote.
With, with Zoom? Did you say Zoom?
No.
Okay. So that was kind of a one-time.
And also, that is a revenue line item. So that was reimbursement from the state for the academy. But we did not include it in the budget because we don't always know that we're going to get that revenue or that we're going to have somebody in the academy. Is that right, Doug? Yeah.
And my last question for page 15 is under equity accounts. Police donations, 6,306. They're listed through, it looks like 2021 and nothing is entered thereafter as far as 2022. Either department or the city manager, so. What is meant by, by a donation?
That is typically, if you're talking the revenue account, that it's a carryover account.
It's a carryover. So it's not going to, once it's used up, it's not going to appear again.
In theory, but hopefully that will be something we'll be adding to.
Okay, fire department, page 16. Assume salaries now. Salaries, top of the page is including the chief. Does it include anybody else?
No, no, that is, and the reason I'm answering these questions is some of these get into some sort of accounting stuff. But, but yeah, those, the, the way we split the salary is, you know, those that are what we call exempt or salaried employees go to that salaried line item. And people that are paid hourly or the non-exempts go into the other wages. So the, the chief was part-time in 20.
He went to full-time.
Yeah.
And who else goes with him? I don't, just name the category.
Sure. The other wages would be the fire inspector, Casey.
Okay. Okay. Then fire department contractual, that's down about 10. So that's, it's up $17,000 for the city manager. It was at the beginning, 2019, 16,291. So just a brief definition, what is meant by contractual?
Sure. Those are the services that we, we have to contract out, like the annual service on the aerial device. The air packs have annual testing that has to be to certify them. So those costs have just continued to increase. So those are just services that are required to be performed that we contract out for the best prices.
Okay. Next page, 17. Revenue, 2% fire insurance dues state. So is this saying the state has given us money?
Yes. So those are the 2% insurance fees that we get. So the state one is the city's payment from the state. And then the third line down, the 2% fire insurance dues townships is the amount we get from the townships for the percentages of the 2%, so.
And my last question on page is equity account, fire department designated fund. You got the last entry is 10,753 and no more. Nothing for later years.
Sure. That, that's just the balance amount. So from those per-call fire charges, the, the, the townships are billed 750. And then 300 of that 750 that the city receives goes into this designated fund. Three hundred of that seven fifty that the city receives goes into this designated fund. And the city up above you see keeps the four fifty. So that money is used for some of the larger maintenance. And upkeep on the township's vehicles, so like tires. And, and the way they do that is so that they don't have to, every time you need like the tire change, you don't have to send that bell out. And divide it amongst all the townships, that just covers those costs in the split.
Okay, public works, page eighteen. I guess the first one there was. Building services, professional services. In twenty twenty, we paid out fifteen thousand six eighty one. And that compares to. To this year's estimate of ten thousand and then the entry for the. Department and the city manager is eleven down, so. This refreshed my memory, what this fifteen thousand six eighty one was for. Is that attorney fees or something?
No. Those were things like elevator services or fire. Fire alarm services and I'm trying to remember, but I think that. In twenty twenty, when we had the. The building modifications, we ended up having some additional expenses. For, for some of those items and we've dropped that back down. To, to what I would consider a, a normal. Set of professional expenses for, for those. For those categories.
Okay, my next page is twenty, same question. Under. Street administration, professional services and the number for the city manager is three thousand, department five thousand. And so there's been a, like this year now is estimated seventy five hundred. And in previous years, smaller amounts, so. What are we doing? Putting in there to increase it to three thousand dollars for city manager.
What that, what that line item is for is for. What I would consider one-off expenses, usually for Delta Three. Or for other engineering services for, for different things. The, the reason why it's been so expensive this year is we had. We had some one-off expenses for them to do cost estimates for. Things like our ARPA. Funding. You know, so, so when, you know, when we did the, the list of ARPA projects. And what the different things we could do. With that ARPA money, it still costs money for them to, to do a quick study and a quick cost estimate. Quick, if you will. So that, so that we know that, you know, upgrading. City Hall is this much, doing the main street culvert repair will be this much. Things of that nature, so, so that's why the line item was very high so far this year. We think that that will come down. Now, when, when we get charged for an actual project, that goes against the project costs. But these are for any of the other one-off type things.
Okay, page twenty one. Street maintenance. Overtime, I assume the overtime there is gonna be. It's twelve thousand seven ninety eight for both department and, and the city manager. The overtime is for snow?
That's, that's actual paid out overtime for the street department workers. Mostly for snow, but that could also be for. Storm damage removal during the spring and summer months. Most of our people take advantage of compensatory time off versus actual paid out. But we have the provisions where you have a maximum number of, of hours that you could. Bank as compensatory time and if you go over that or if you. Go past the cutoff date, that money gets paid out and that's where this comes from.
Okay, thank you. My next one is street maintenance, street signs. Years ago, I went down to the street garage and talked to. Person there and he's telling me about all the signs that are stolen. So is, is twelve thousand dollars from both department and city manager, is that reflecting? The stealing was reflecting more the upkeep of the sign, some, we have a few signs are difficult to read. And so what does, and, and this amount of money is. Increasing because in the past years, here's the actual twenty twenty is eight thousand one sixty six, so. We're going up on signs, so what is this, is this theft, is this deterioration of signs or what?
Actually both. When, when there's theft of signs, if, if we. If we and our friends at the PD cannot find those. Then we end up having to pay for it out of, out of this account. We also have. Over thirty six hundred signs. And so we, we generally are required to replace them every ten years. So that's an actual replacement of roughly one sign a day. In the city of Platteville in order to do this, so that's what this money is supposed to be for.
Okay, I'll go on to. Let's see. Page twenty three. I was curious about, I wanted to be. I wanna know what this first item, highway salaries. Six thousand nine hundred or six thousand eight hundred. So what is that as far as highway salaries? Expense, is that taking care of certain streets in a city?
Correct. We, we have state highways eighty, which is Water Street and Highway eighty one. Which are Pine Chestnut Adams and Lancaster Street. We get separate money for that from the state, as state aids. And we need to account for it separately. This is actually just a percentage, the salary line is a percentage of our street superintendent's salary.
And going on to page twenty seven. I was wondering about this entry. It's, it's in the first big group that said recycling bins, two thousand five hundred. And then it goes down. To revenues, recycle sale of recycled bins, four fifty.
What happens is to get a price break, we get essentially a pallet of the. A little green bins that, that homeowners have. And then, and we, we buy, like we did in twenty nineteen, we bought a number of those. And we. Look at how many we sell and, and need and then every so often we get. Another set and then the revenue is for the sale of those bins back to the residents.
Okay. Twenty eight. Public Works weeds, is this? The category as far as lawns?
Yes.
Okay. Well, sometime we have to talk more about this because. I was driving around the other day and I found some lawns that were weedy, so we're still on the basis of. Of. Okay, so we have to report to weedy lawns. Okay, moving on to twenty nine cemeteries. Did you ask about some of this, Isaac?
If I asked about the income towards the bottom, or excuse me, the, the interest.
I was curious as to whether. Greenwood Cemetery, Perpetual and Hillside Cemetery, Perpetual. What are the uses for those accounts? In particular, I'm asking whether those accounts can be used at all for straightening of. Stones which are bent severely. Bent over severely. Is there ever been any usage? Or any statement that says we can use that money for stones which are not. Correctly monitored anymore.
Um, in, in general, in general, yes, the, that's something that we can use that for. You know, it just depends on, on how we, how we work through that. Believe that the last time we used perpetual care funds. Was when we did some paving in Hillside Cemetery. And then a number, and then quite a few years back, we did the fencing and at Greenwood Cemetery. That's probably fifteen years ago or so. So those are kind, the kinds of things that, that we've used that for.
Library page thirty one. I was curious as to. The library as far as. Oh, there was a. A note, I believe even the city managers yearly update. Or in the library directors. Account. There is restructuring now, the library as far as restructuring. What are they, are they making more? More. Positions with benefits when they say restructuring. You know, what, I'm looking at what percentage of the library staff has benefits. And what percentage does not and what are, what are the numbers? I realize the city gives money. To the library and the money supposedly can, the library can supposedly use according to what. And they follow the city.
Sure.
In general.
So the Platteville Public Library has had twenty positions. Five of which are full-time and we will keep five full-time positions at this time. The remainder of those positions, we've been working on just kind of streamlining. We had a couple of positions that were twenty nine hours a week, some that were twenty five and some that were. Closer to ten or fifteen, so what we're striving for now is to make all of them true. Regular part-time twenty hour a week positions. Those part-time positions do not receive health benefits, but they do receive paid time off sick. Things like that.
Okay, so the part-time positions then. How many hours a week are they working? Or do you have different? Different people working different amounts of hours?
We're aiming to get most of them, most of the part-timers into the twenty hour range, yes. We will continue to have a few which tend to be student workers that would work less than twenty.
Well, I'm just expressing. My belief that I'd like to see people having more. Hours for benefits, I don't know how this all works out, but that's what my belief is. I don't know what these people have as far as any other income. So this is why I ran. Then on page thirty two, first item. City, let's see, county, it's county fund, county fund, yes, professional services. And that's sixty two thousand dollars. From both the department and the city manager. And also is the budget for twenty twenty one, so. That is. Income. For professional services which are briefly what?
So this is not revenue, that is expense.
It's an expense.
Yes, that would be covered through our county funding revenue. And so the professional services line, a large chunk of that is service fees that we pay to. The Southwest Wisconsin library system for things like our online library catalog. Our ebook offerings so people can download ebooks and audiobooks prices. And then it also includes things like snow removal or. Fees for people to help with things that are outside our area of expertise.
And going on to museums. Thirty three. Museum, second item, seasonal people. Do they receive any benefits, any? Benefits? And then also have museum other wages, do those people receive benefits? That's a question. Two questions.
In general, at this time, there's only one full-time employee at the museum and that is myself. Then we have two so-called regular part-time employees at twenty hours per week. And they receive half benefits, so there's no health. Dental vision or anything like that, but they do receive PTO vacation benefits. Those are two parties and then all the rest of the staff are either temporary grant funded positions. Or seasonal positions, then receive no benefits of any kind.
Okay, thank you. I think you talked about the pool, that question.
Yep.
And my question on lifeguards, did. Are the lifeguards, when we cover as far as the training that they have to have every. Two or three years. Have and it was written up, I think city manager had that in your up to date. And so in this proposal for the. Lifeguards, will that be?
Yes, so that is something that we are looking at within this budget is to, again, to be more active and to. Kind of promote those positions of recruitment, we're looking to cover that cost.
That's, where is that listed here as far as, is it listed here yet? Pool, I went through the pool items, I'm trying, I was trying to find it.
Have that covered under outlay?
I think so, yes.
Is that where it is?
So I will verify that with Luke, obviously unfortunately, he won tickets to the Milwaukee Bucks game tonight as a VIP. So I wanted to make sure he was able to go, but I'll verify where that is, but yes, my, my intention was to include that we would be start to pay for that cost.
Okay, um. Page forty. It is under revenues for the senior center. Is, there's um. No revenue listed, senior center rent revenue, so after twenty twenty nine, there's nothing listed there. For um, department or city manager.
So what is happening there is that revenue is now being moved to the OE gray account. Because specifically since that building is within OE gray. That revenue is no longer being recognized under the senior center, it is now being recognized as a OE gray revenue.
And then the senior center grant. Ten thousand. Done the first nine under revenue.
You wondering kind of what that is?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't.
So it's a grant, in my understanding is it is a grant that they apply for every year. Um, and a portion of that can be used to cover operational expenses. Um, and then another portion of that can be used basically towards kind of their. They have some discretion of options, they either go towards programming, it can go towards a project maintenance, those type of things.
Okay. This show, you're gonna get off free here. It's not that I ran out of time. But uh. It did have community development RDA. I think I have the answer, so I'm not gonna ask. Oh, my last question, page forty nine. I just, I wanted to find out. Under expenses. The two to nineteen thousand nine nine six. It's about the fourth thing from the bottom, lease payments to developer, so we have up here. Kid seven, General Capital Group, Ruxton Apartments, I, I. I believe understand that now. I'm trying to think. Lease payments to developer, who am I missing?
That's, that's the uh, the lease payments that we make for the library and parking facility.
But again.
That's the, the uh, lease payments that we make for the library building and parking facility.
Oh, the library, okay. That's eighteen thousand a month.
Right.
Oh, okay. Got it. Didn't finish until about four years more gone by or something like that.
Correct.
All right, Ken, thank you. Kathy, do you have additional questions?
I do, um. Couple things, the.
You'll have to give us the page numbers.
Pardon?
You need to give us the page numbers.
Yeah, um. Page for, under the parks department, page thirty five, street department, page. Twenty one. I, the um, line item for vehicle lease shows up. Is there, I'm not seeing a decrease in maintenance. Somewhere, or is that something that's gonna show up a year after that?
That's kind of our intention, correct, is that we want, eventually are, the goal would be that we, we will start to see as we go with the lease program that will have newer vehicles. And the intention should be that with, as we get the more newer fleet, our maintenance costs should go down. So that is our intention that, yes, over the next couple of years as we. Continue with that program, it should be the case, if that's not, then we are no longer going to be in that program.
So that, just for clarification, we're anticipating in twenty twenty two. That the line item in each of those departments for maintenance. Will be decreased because of the new leased vehicles.
There should be, there, now there still may be some, because obviously we have vehicles that, no matter what, are going to require some form of maintenance.
Okay.
But I think as we get a better understanding of the program and kind of seeing the true cost benefit analysis. We're gonna have a better gauge of if what was pitched to us that we should be seeing that is truly happening. If not, then we're gonna come back to you and say, okay, we've, we've had some time now to kind of review this lease program and. The numbers aren't really showing what we were told, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Um, that's what I was thinking, but I wanted to just double check, um.
I would also just point out that um.
Pardon?
There are vehicles that are repaired under that line item that are not in the program as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Yep.
Amen. Correct. Yeah, all of our plow trucks are not in the program and they.
Right, yeah. Okay, then, um, it was already brought up about the Freidenreich, um. But part of the budget. The, where does, under the police department, they have animal control expense of two thousand dollars? Does that cover? When. A citizen calls and says there's a loose dog, somebody needs to come and get it, and then it's taken to a, out to the vet.
Initially, it does, and.
Okay.
Until that amount is.
That comes out of, that's where that comes from, is out of the.
Initially.
Budget.
Initially, and then the last few years, we've been supplemented due to a lot of stray cats. We have a much better return rate on stray dogs. I don't, I know owners and holding them accountable, but on cats, that's entirely.
Okay, okay. I just, maybe I'm on Facebook too much, but I see an awful lot of dogs that are picked up and taken somewhere and. Somebody has to deal with them, so.
And we do initially, and, but like I said, we have a pretty good batting average figuring out who owns them.
Okay, um, and then. I think, I had a lot of questions, but I think a lot of that has been um, taken care of. But it, just an, an overview, um. I'm looking at. What, when the budget is approved, if it's approved at. The way it's presented at three point four, or if it goes up to four point four. It's gonna be up to us. To sell it. And when I did the breakdown. For. The reason for an increase. Um. It's. Basically, um. Health insurance. And retention of employees. And salt. That's pretty much it. I mean, that's, that's a perception that the public is gonna have, um. So it, it's reality. I guess, um. Any. I, I understand the presentation and I hope not one single city employee thinks that, that. I don't have a true appreciation for what they do, because I do. I understand from a business perspective. Maintain or keeping your employees, that turnover is, is expensive. But I guess I would. Um, look to. For some help in how to. Really market that concept. Because we are still in a pandemic, we have a lot of people that have been affected. That lost their jobs, that had income challenges, both as individuals and businesses. Um, and still do, now we're looking at inflation, um. I guess, uh, as a result of the, the, last year was my first time through the budget. And that was one thing that was brought up to me more than anything. Was because we added employees, this time we're not adding employees.
Right.
But if we're asking the taxpayers. To help with an increase. Um, just to retain employees is a little bit of a hard sell. So. Any help in that arena would be, would be welcome.
For sure.
Um. Even though I know that when we met last week. Um, the reality is the city's portion of your tax bill. In my opinion, is very extremely reasonable. Um, it's still an increase.
Mm-hmm.
And. Um, I'm, I'm just hoping that we can come to some agreement that everybody is going to be happy with.
Sure.
So. That's my bottom line. It's the only questions, comments I have.
I mean, questions. Am on the large piece of paper that you gave us, the upper revenue decreases, second. Set of information, uh, interest, which you explained, the transportation aids, why did that go down?
So primarily, you wanna take that one, Howard?
Um, there's two reasons for it. Primarily, it's uh, the way that, that it's done is it's, it's done by a formula. Based on the six year average of how much we spend for our transportation. That includes our operational budget and our CIP. And the fact that our CIP has been flat or going down over the last number of years. Means that that six year average keeps going down. And the other part in this is it's based on the, the aid allowed by the state. They, they give the money to the townships first. And then whatever's left, they allocate to counties, town, county cities and villages. And they just basically do a percentage and. From last year to this year, that percentage went down. Um. I, I think it was like sixteen percent last year and now it's fifteen something. Um, so, so what it does is it takes that six year average and then it says we will give you fifteen point eight. Five percent of, of that number. Uh, whereas last year it was sixteen point one or two or whatever, so.
So they treat the transportation aids most kind of like the municipal aids, because the municipal aids are done the same, I mean, you. Submit for your municipal aids, but then they basically divide up the money they have and you might get. Twenty percent of what you submitted. Everybody would get the same percent, but you would just get, you don't really get what you submit. Right, any other questions, Eileen? Uh, I would like a list of leased vehicles.
Yeah, certainly.
And uh, the ones we leased in twenty twenty, are the ones we leased in twenty twenty one and the ones that we intend to lease in twenty twenty two. So we can see how that turnover is doing.
Yes.
And where those are, I did notice, and I'm not going to go page by page, but I did notice. That in some cases where there were vehicle leases, there were uh, itemized places for vehicle insurance. In other places there are not. So I'm not sure exactly why that is the case, but um. I just kind of, you know, as I.
Yeah, it, it's definitely something as we kind of review the, the budget in areas where potentially what that means is more than likely that cost is somewhere else within that. Budget, whether it be as you've kind of talked about, there's outlay, there's operating expenses. Um, as we kind of refine this better, I would agree with you one hundred percent, it should be leases, insurance, boom. Um, that's kind of our, our long term goal is to kind of make that more. Parried, parried from department to department. None of that, could you be, including in that list, could you? Show what. Thing or getting rid of. Yes. Happened to that vehicle.
That, that whole flow chart.
Yep.
Yep. I, I guess the other thing I would say, I, I've talked about this before, but we spend an incredible amount of money. On decorating cars. I guess I'd like just to think about. Why we have to decorate our cars so much, I mean, Kathy, you talked about, you know, it's kind of hard to sell the, the. You know, retaining employee, you know, not really at, just buying more salt, but it's hard for me. When I look at it. And I see incredible expense for decorating a car, putting decals on it, other kinds of things. Understand that we need to have cars that are more for our city, but I don't think we need to have. That much money spent on decorating cars, that's what I call it. Maybe you call it something else, maybe it's called uh. Marketing or something else, but. Whatever, I, I'm. Again, I'm not gonna go line by line.
Oh, I got you.
Point that out, I'm just, I'm just telling everyone.
For.
Other than that, Isaac, any further question, any other question? Lynn? Ken?
No.
Kathy?
Wanna make one comment, back to the uh, the staffing with the wage increase. I sit on police and fire. And the four percent increase, Doug. I totally endorse that, and all I can say is I hope it's enough. I, the, the challenge there is, is tremendous. And in my opinion. The, the safety between police and fire. Public works is the most important thing that we as a city need to be paying attention to, so. I know the stresses with the, the PD right now is, is significant, so. I support that.
Eileen. No, I was. I sort of echoing what Kathy said, if you think about, the city didn't get to shut down. It may have wanted to sometimes during COVID, because it, it was difficult, I mean, everybody liked the school system or anything, I'm not saying that we were any different. Had it any maybe more difficult. Lot of other people, and I understand people lost their jobs too, on the flip side, city staff was here. Taking care of city needs, and that was done very well. During COVID, and I think when you look at some revenue increases that we're proposing. Regardless of whether or not COVID would have happened, I think those increases need to be addressed. Positive way, and as Adam said, we're seeing it throughout the country. Throughout the country, everything is going up, wages are going up, maybe not enough, but they are going up. Eating against those wages, and the other thing is expense, salt's a prime example. I mean, our, as a city, our expenses have increased just like your expenses have at home, and so. Best we can do in the most efficient way, I think we can with the money that we uh, actually. And kudos also for people who have gotten grants and things like that, because, you know, each department tries. Help with the expenses in that department.
Okay, folks, I think that's probably about a wrap, unless, Adam, you have anything else you wanna say?
No, I think again, I appreciate, um, obviously all the work that the department directors and staff have done to put this budget together. Um, and I appreciate all the questions that obviously you have council members have asked, you're asking the right questions, um, I think you're, you're. I think your, your comments and your concerns are valid. It's definitely tough. You know, our budgets are primarily their employee based. So that's the kind of the, the rub where the rub meets the, you know, road or use whatever analogy you want. Is the majority of our department budgets, our employee cost is our most expensive cost. And that's the, at the end of the day, that's the decision we have to make as. You know, staff, you have to make as council and as a community member, we have to make is if we have an expectation of service. In regards to what we want, there's a cost for that and it's not gonna go down. You know, and so that's the constant conversation we have to consider is ensuring that we're doing the best we can, we're utilizing those resources. We're being competitive as you just indicated, Eileen. And that we continue to find any way we can to find additional revenue sources and streams. Because that's really unfortunately, that's where we're at. We have two options. Either we raise taxes in order to cover the deficit or we find a revenue source to cover that difference. And if we can't, then it's sometimes some tough conversations we have to have about what does that mean for our service level? If the expectation is there, there's a cost to that. And if we want to reduce that. Then you have to have the conversation about the reduction of, of those services. So. It's tough, you know, it's always going to be a, a constant conversation and it should be. But obviously I appreciate the staff and coming up with this. I appreciate everybody's thoughts. So. The next step is obviously we do have another work session scheduled if you guys feel that is necessary. Otherwise, what we will continue to do then, if you don't think that's necessary, if you feel like you got most of your questions tonight. We then will continue to kind of work on finalizing those numbers. And then what will happen is there typically is a presentation that occurs in November that is kind of the, we give to the public. We kind of let that go. And then on the twenty third is the official kind of public hearing that we set up. So that obviously is up to you guys as, as far as what you want to do. So that's kind of, I guess would be the last question I have is do you feel you have enough information for us to kind of move towards those public hearings? Or do you want to have another kind of work session to flesh out any questions or concerns that you have?
Final with what we have.
I agree. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay, if with the list of vehicles and stuff that we've asked and if anybody. On the council has a question specifically about a budget item. Certainly Adam is available and Nicola probably two is available to answer any specific questions you have if you. Comb through the line items again. Otherwise, we will not have a work session on the next. Meeting. I think you could put instead of a work session, you could just put it at the end as.
Sure.
CM budget, any questions?
Yep.
And if no one has questions, then we'll just go through.
Through.
So it, it'll be an agenda item, but not an agenda item, kind of.
Good.
For lack of a better, I mean, no further explanation needed unless someone has a specific.
And that gives us an opportunity, obviously, if there are any changes that we're seeing, if we do get information, we can kind of let you know. So we'll, we'll have a placeholder for the next couple of meetings heading up to the budgetary hearings. To just, if we need to say anything, we'll let you know.
Because we owe statement of assessment and other things come in and so that'll be good. And thank you to all the people who worked on this and put this together. It's never an easy job to do a buzz budget and it's, yeah, it's just not an easy job. So thank you everyone. And I think I'm looking for one motion.
Move to adjourn.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Isaac to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Candace, you can write down that as six with Jason gone.
Thank you.